And please join us in a pledge of allegiance. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right, next up, all right, Wednesday's pet and we are breaching new pet boundaries here. Ms. Stenick, the floor is yours.
Okay, this is Hip. And there's another one just like it.
Sherri, do you want to stand over closer to the podium so the mic can pick up all the wonderful things you're saying?
This is Hip and it's a female rabbit. As you can, you can tell it's a rabbit, I don't know that you can tell it's female. But there are two female rabbits, Hip and Hop, they're identical. And they're available at 211 One Ride Highway. Same purchase fee, what is it?
These probably either $5 or no charge.
$5 or no charge. I want you to know that the bird left. He was adopted from last time, so we are doing pretty well with that. And yesterday, I guess, they were talking about euthanizing a bunch of cats in Bridgeport at the animal shelter. And I want you to know that all but one has been adopted as of today, so that's good news and hopefully the other one will be as well. Or if you want a cat, call the animal control in Bridgeport. Lastly, one of the reasons we're bringing other animals besides dogs and cats is just to remind everybody that animal control doesn't just end at dogs and cats. They deal with, last week they had a python. I'm not kidding you. And that's not the first large snake that they've dealt with. There are all kinds of animals that they pick up in yards and attics and, you know, so when you think of animal control, don't just think dogs and cats, but we have plenty of them for you to adopt. So come see them at 211 One Ride Highway and adopt Hip and Hop. Thank you.
All right. Sherri, thank you very much. And still undefeated, it's not just dogs and cats. Sherri can get any animal, find any animal home. Thank you again.
Appreciate it.
Are all of our Girl Scouts friends here yet?
No.
Okay, all right, we'll hold off on that for a bit. We're going to skip item four for just a moment. We're going to move on to resignations. Peter Petron has resigned from the Historic District Commission. And on Town Planning and Zoning Commission, Brian McClair has stepped down. And Gerald Alessi has stepped down as an alternate. We want to thank all three of these volunteers for their help and their work throughout town. I know that Brian McClair's case, he has been a volunteer for this town in a number of capacities over the years, from the RTM to planning and zoning. He recently served as chair on planning and zoning, has done a superb job in that. Mr. Alessi will come up later in the agenda and will be back in harness for the town. And Peter Petron is moving out of town, so he won't be able to kind of continue his work in the Historic District Commission, but has done a great job for us on that. And that commission has really done much to maintain our town's culture, our heritage, and keep our past alive. And that's part of what makes Fairfield special, so we want to thank him also. Any comments from my colleagues? This point? Okay. Reappointments. First up is the Ethics Commission. This does require RTM approval. We have Martha Brooks, Tom Drew, David Schmidt. Martha is Democrat, 1821 Jennings Road, for a term of 1113 through 1115. Thomas Drew, Democrat, 151 Blue Ridge Road, term from 1113 to 1115. And David Schmidt, now Republican, 61 Partridge Lane, from a term of 1113 to 1115. All three are reappointments, this board has appointed them in the past. Any discussion on these three on the board?
May I make a motion?
Yes.
I move to accept and approve all three.
Second. All right, any further discussion? Any comments from the body? Seeing none, back to the board. Are we ready to vote?
Quick comment?
Yes, go ahead.
Just want to thank the Ethics Commission members and the, Professor Schmidt recently held the workshop for us and it was noted that there are a couple ways for people to get in touch with the Ethics Commission. One, through the town clerk's office and then in addition through the chair, which at last note was Tom Drew. So just wanted to mention that.
Thank you. And I think if nothing else works, calling Town Hall or calling First Selectment's office will definitely get you in touch with the Ethics Commission. Fortunately, these folks haven't been very busy, so we appreciate that. And unless there's any further discussion, are we ready to vote? All in favor? Aye. Thank you. Just as a side note, the vote does have to be unanimous by this board to forward it on to the RTM. Next up, Conservation Commission. This is a first selectman appointment, so this is for information only, but Richard D'Amico, a Republican, of 1353 Brooklawn Avenue, has been appointed to finish out the term of Latisha Ferguson from 1109 to 1114, and that's as an alternate member. Moving on to item eight on the agenda. Appointments to the Bird Gardens Advisory Committee. Jennifer B. Downing, unaffiliated, from 1197 Mine Hill Road. The term is 1110 through 1113, to replace Ken Placco, who moved to a liaison position. I have a motion to accept.
So moved.
A second.
Second.
All right, any further discussion on the board? Is Jennifer here? That's right, sorry, it's noted here, she wouldn't be able to make that. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Any comments from the public? Back to the board. Any further discussion? Are we ready to vote? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Ms. Downing, congratulations wherever you are and thank you for your service to the town. Next up, Historic District Commission. Margaret Browning Cufferman, unaffiliated, from 877 Westport Turnpike, for a term from 1110 to 1115. This is to replace Peter Petron, who resigned, and that was earlier in the agenda. I have a motion to accept.
So moved.
A second.
Second.
Any comments from the board? I should make a note that Ms. Cufferman is not here today. Any comments from the public? Seeing none, back to the board. Are we ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next up, also for the Historic District Commission, John Morgan, Republican, from 147 Algonquin Road, for a term of 1111 through 1116. This is an alternate position. And this is to replace Margaret Cufferman, who moved to full member. I have a motion to accept.
So moved.
A second.
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Morgan here.
Here.
All right, thank you. Any questions, Mr. Morgan? Any comments from the public? All right, back to the board. Are we ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Mr. Morgan, congratulations and thank you for your service.
Thank you, I'm honored.
Your position does require RTM approval and we'll be in touch when the next, once we confirm when the next RTM meeting is. Next up, the Human Services Commission. I have a motion to accept Elita Ward, Democrat, 3192 Bronson Road, for a term from 1109 to 1113. This is to replace Elizabeth O'Connell, who resigned.
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All right. Reverend Ward, you're here?
Yep.
All right. Any discussion, comments from the board? Go ahead.
I will just comment and thank you. I have not had a chance to speak with you. I know that the Human Services Commission, and I see some of the members here, have been hard at work. And we'll just take this opportunity to just note that certainly the work that continues in terms of our senior center, but hope that the commission will continue to address many of the other issues that are involved in human services, including disability in the town. And I am very grateful for your willingness to step forward and serve with some other really wonderful members who I know are here, some who are not. So thank you.
Mr. Kylie?
Good man.
All right, I just both concur with my colleague, but also point out that with the impact of Storm Sandy on our town, one of the things that's come through loud and clear is the increased need for social services for many of our residents and citizens. So this board and their services, their mission, is going to get a lot more focus in the time ahead. So again, thank you for your service. Any comments from the public? Back to the board, are we ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Congratulations and thank you for your service. Next up, Town Planning and Zoning Commission. Gerald, may I have a motion to accept Gerald Alessi, a Republican, from 582 Shrub Oak Lane, for a term from 1111 through 1115. And this is to replace Brian McClair, who resigned.
So moved.
A second.
Second.
All right, any, Mr. Alessi?
He's not here.
Not here, okay. Any comments from the board? All right, Kristen.
I will comment, just Mr. Alessi's been a very faithful member of that commission thus far as an alternate. I'm glad to see him moving into the full position and I think that he brings a lot to the table, so I'm glad to support him.
Kevin, any thoughts?
At the moment, no.
Okay. Any comments from the public? Seeing none, back to the board. Any final comments? Okay. All right. Mr. Alessi's not here, but he has been already serving as an alternate on the Planning and Zoning Commission. So again, we thank him for his service as part of that and look forward to him stepping up as a full-time member. Are we ready to vote?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Congratulations, Mr. Alessi. Next up, also for the Town Planning and Zoning Commission, Anthony Calabrese, Republican, 216 Autumn Ridge Road, for a term from 1109 to 1113, an alternate, to replace Mr. Alessi, who is moving to a full member. I have a motion to accept.
So moved.
A second.
Second.
Mr. Calabrese, I see you're here.
President.
All right, any comments from the board?
Just, go ahead. Here we go. Okay, thank you. I just wanted to, we had a lot of appointments today on some very important boards. Zoning, taking care of our town, human services, taking care of our people, the Historic District Commission, the Ethics Commission, Conservation, the Bird Gardens, and the Historic District Commission as well. And it's important, as we've discussed in the past, that we have volunteers that are willing to step up and work for our town and volunteer their skills, their time, their efforts, and sacrifice time away from their families while they volunteer for our town. Personally, I greatly respect everyone who serves on all these boards and commissions and I want to thank them all, wish them well, and we're here to help you in any way we can. Thank you for serving.
Kristen?
Well put.
Okay. The, I would concur with Mr. Kylie, it's, I know it's been said before, but I'd add in, if we had to pay for the skills and experience that we get freely given by residents of this town, the town simply couldn't afford it. This town is as well represented and as well cared for because of the volunteers that do this. All that is a lead into Mr. Calabrese, who is looking for a position on the Town Planning and Zoning Commission. And I should point out that he not only works for the Parks and Rec Department, but also is a well-known local sports referee. And I would suggest that that's great training and background for being on planning and zoning, where I think you're going to find yourself playing referee in more than one case coming up. So it, thank you for your interest in that position and moving on. Any comments from the public? Back to the board, any further comments here?
You're supposed to wait until we vote until you tell them that.
Ah. Next time. All right, ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Congratulations. Congratulations and thank you again for taking on another volunteer activity as your host. All right.
The Girl Scouts are here at this point.
Thank you. All right, coming back to item four on the agenda.
Oh, yes.
We have some special recognition for Girl Scouts. And we have three young women that are here to be honored and recognized for their achievements. I think one of the things that's happened over time is that many folks are familiar with the term Eagle Scout, as it applies to Boy Scouts. But it turns out, and what I learned last year, was the Girl Scouts have a similar honor called the Gold Award. And we have with us today Erin Marie McCurley. Who's Erin? Okay, very good. Kieranin Black. Okay. And Anne Marie Guzy.
Guzy.
Guzy, all right. And we wanted to say, congratulations to each of you. We have a proclamation from the town to honor each of you with. But would someone care to first tell us a little bit about the Gold Award and what it means? And if you could stand behind the podium, so you're speaking into the microphone. And ladies, if you could just back up a bit so the camera can see all three of you. Cameras are in the back of the room. Oh, well, there's got, are still photos here.
So the Gold Award is somewhat equivalent to the Eagle Scout Award. It's a lot different. It's more of a take action project rather than a one-time building project or something like that. So we have to use leadership skills, we have to come up with a curriculum, have a team, and base, see how like the children or whoever you're working with learn from the beginning to the end. So there's a lot of things that go into it. My project, for example, was I wrote a children's book and I read it to low-income families at the Caroline House in Bridgeport. And we made healthy snacks. It was about healthy eating and exposing them to fruits and vegetables that they don't usually have. And so they learned a lot about that and they were able to practice their reading and their English. So that would be an example of a Gold Award project. So they really, really help out the community and they allow girls to pick a problem that they see and again, like take action and deal with it.
Okay, very good, very good. Let's do a couple things here. I've got three proclamations. I'm, let me give some highlights to me to kind of, I guess, properly embarrass each of you, as long as you're here in front of us all, but for your good works. Erin, this award is given out to less than 6% of all Girl Scouts. That's a tremendous honor. The Gold Award requires girls to spend at least 80 hours researching issues, assessing community needs and resources, building a team, and making a sustainable impact on the community, all of which Erin has done. Our accomplished, refined leadership and citizenship skills that have set her apart as a community leader. And this is just a phenomenal age to start that out, so thank you. Her Gold Award project, Erin created a theater program that helped introduce children from countries to American culture by having to get up in front of a crowd and perform American stories. Erin's program will now be part of Caroline's House Summer Program each year, and Erin plans to study elementary education. And in honor of all that, now therefore, I'm Michael C. Tetra, first selectman of the town of Fairfield, due hereby proclaim July 30th, is Erin Marie McCurley Day in Fairfield. Congratulations. Kieranin, and I'll skip to the Kieranin parts of this, some of that was describing the award overall. But for her Gold Award project, Kieranin wrote a children's book about healthy eating after being inspired by the work of Margaret Feeney. And 100 copies of Kieranin's book were copied and given out to children that attended readings that took place in schools at, after-school programs in Bridgeport. In addition, copies were made available for the local library. A published author already. Wow. Kieranin wants to pursue a career in broadcast journalism in the future. In honor of all that, now therefore, I'm Michael C. Tetra, first selectman of the town of Fairfield, due hereby proclaim July 30th, 2013, as Kieranin Black Day throughout the town of Fairfield. Congratulations. Anne Marie Guzy, for her Gold Award project, Anne Marie created a recycling and sustainability program for elementary and middle school children that incorporated arts and crafts. And whereas Anne Marie's program was held at Wakeman Boys and Girls Club in Fairfield, where she presented statistics and facts alongside the craft projects to help students understand the importance of recycling, her program is now being integrated into the curriculum of existing classes at the club. Anne Marie's, Anne Marie, wow, plans to study engineering at college. Way to go.
He's biased.
My degree's in engineering, so I identify with that. Now therefore, I'm Michael C. Tetra, first selectman of the town of Fairfield, due hereby proclaim July 30th, 2013, as Anne Marie Guzy Day. Congratulations. Guys, let's go up there. And let's each, let's each present these. Can?
You're welcome.
Anne Marie.
Thank you.
And let's see, how do we do this? I don't know. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations. That's fantastic. Well, congratulations to you. Congratulations. Please.
I just want to thank each of you, because it's true, I think each one of the three of us have had occasion to, we've had one other Girl Scout here before the Board of Selectmen, but we've each attended Eagle Scout ceremonies. And what I find is that, as Mr. Tetra said before, it's very commonly known and understood and perhaps a little more popular. And I think that one of the things that I respect so much about each one of you is that you stuck with it. I was a Girl Scout leader for six years and many of the girls were hesitant to continue and you really stuck with it and put your hearts and souls into something. And not only stuck with it, but took a real leadership role. And we really need to have Eagle Scouts and Gold Award winners who are our future leaders who come forward and serve and bring voice to your work going forward. So from education to engineering, whatever you do, I hope you will continue to be leaders in the future. So thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations. And you ladies are leaders in our community today and you will be in the future. I want to congratulate you on all your achievements and your hard work and your efforts and thank you very much for all your contributions toward our town. Congratulations.
Thank you.
I think that, just to highlight one thing, as you look through this, and one of the things that I think back to the day when we were somewhat younger, what impresses me about what you did is each of your tasks, and as you articulated earlier, was something that's sustainable, something lasting, something that has an impact not only today, but in the future for our community. And I know back in the day, we weren't quite as conscious or aware of doing that, so I want to thank you for your leadership in that and making our community a better place. Good luck in the future. Thank you, ladies. All right. Next up on the agenda, item nine, is the Fairfield Ludlum High School Building Committee. To here consider and act upon the following appointments to the Fairfield Ludlum High School Building Committee. This also requires RTM approval. Mark Andre, Democrat, from 130 Lakeview Drive. Mark Donald, unaffiliated, from 360 Zose Drive. Donna Erdel, Democrat, from 375 South Benson Road. Terry Leopold, unaffiliated, from 146 Coleman Road. Joseph Pagnosi, Republican, from 1496 Fairfield Woods Road. Robert Sikler, unaffiliated, from 175 Wakeman Road. I hope I said that right. David Weber, Democrat, from 1654 North Benson Road. May I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
Second. I'll second.
Okay. All right, let's see. Any of the folks that are here, kind of raise your hand and let us know who you are. Ms. Downing?
Joe Pagnosi.
Pagnosi?
Mark Donald.
Mark Donald?
Mark Andre.
Yes.
Donna Erdel.
Donna?
Robert Sikler.
Did I say that right?
Hello.
Okay, my apologies.
No, that's fine.
Any questions or comments from the board?
Well, just quickly, we have a big job ahead of us and the town is excited about our renovation project. And thank you for stepping up to volunteer for this very important building committee, which is going to service both our town and our schools and our students for many years to come. We're here to help you in any way we can to support you in every way possible. And thank you for stepping up and volunteering your time and your expertise. And we look forward to working with you over the next few months to a couple of years on this committee. Thank you.
Kristen?
Yes, I would echo what Selectman Kylie said. It is a few months to a couple of years, so we appreciate that you're willing to step forward for what is not going to be a quick kind of project. It will take time and your time, and thank you for giving the gift of that time. I think that this is, this is an impressive group with a variety of experience and background and perspective, which is phenomenal. It's what we need on a building committee. I know that First Selectman Tetra has done a good job with other building committees in terms of orientation, but I would echo what Selectman Kylie said. Certainly, if any one of us can be a help to you as you have questions going forward, please feel free to reach out and call us. And certainly, there are others who aren't here today who will be a very integral part of the process with you, those from our Board of Education and our purchasing department. We have a lot of great resources, so take advantage of that. And we recognize what a big responsibility this is that you're undertaking and thank you very much.
Thank you. I think there's no question that, you know, especially in this economy, that we're looking to the building committees both to be conscientious with the dollars that are being spent, but also maximizing the value that we're getting back, because nothing is worth doing a project more than once. So we're looking for your help, guidance, and leadership on these projects and getting them done to the quality that our students and our town deserves. So again, thank you for your service on that. Thank you for stepping up to do this. Any comments from the public? All right, back to the board.
I would just ask, since folks are here now, if, I know we don't usually take questions, but if there were any comments or anything that those who are present today might want to say to us or comment about. Again, we're here all the time, but since we're here today, just put that out there.
All right. Well, thank you. Are we ready to vote?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And congratulations. Just about the process, you'll need to be approved at an RTM meeting. Currently, the next RTM meeting is scheduled in September. We are talking to the moderator about whether possibly to have a special meeting in late August for the express purpose of approving the Ludlum Building Committee so that you can get started sooner. Once you're approved by the RTM, we'll schedule an orientation session and take you through kind of how the process works, what resources you have available, and give you an orientation as Kristen mentioned earlier. All right, so again, thank you very much for volunteering. You're building part of our future and we very much appreciate it. Thank you. Next up, review and approval of department head compensation. May I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
The schedule was laid out in our packet just by way of description. We're doing this, at least in recent memory, a little bit differently in terms of, the town charter points out that department head raises, compensation should be approved by the Board of Selectmen. So we're doing it at the meeting this year. We have, you know, and looking at our department heads, and certainly when you look at the challenges we faced in the last two years, certainly with the storms and certainly some of the budget challenges that we've gone through, our department heads have been the key managers, key folks that delivered on the service during the storm, when it took time to get their departments going above and beyond the call of duty. They're also the folks that we rely on to look for the ways the town could be more productive, the way that we can... the way that we can meet new challenges and new changes, the ways that we can incorporate technology. And as we go through each department, there are certainly opportunities or examples of where that's taken place, where the focus is on how do we make the town better, how do we make the town, raise service levels to our citizens, and how do we do that more cost-effectively? So with that, any comments or discussion from my colleagues? Bill, sir?
I have a couple of comments.
Go ahead.
I think one of the, this is a different process. We did not, and I recognize, in fact, reviewed with the First Selectmen, just the fact that it is part of the charter that the Board of Selectmen takes this action. And I find it challenging today to vote on this, simply because as the Board of Selectmen, we are not, all three of us, certainly the First Selectmen, are not the day-to-day supervisors or are not involved in the day-to-day interactions. We were very fortunate here in our town to have so many extremely capable and dedicated department heads who go above and beyond what they're asked to do. And Storm Sandy is an excellent example. We keep using that example, but it really was a way to see just how people interacted and worked as a team and did so much. And so that said, I think just from a process standpoint, it is a little bit difficult to make this vote today. And in large part, it's really relying on the First Selectmen and his interactions and conversations with those department heads and in terms of the process. And to that end, I wondered if maybe you could talk a little bit about, about that work in terms of the working with department heads and, you know, do you have a chance, I'm assuming, but would love to hear publicly, a chance to sit down and talk with department heads about the work that they're doing and the goals that they have for their departments?
Okay, I'm not quite sure.
Just in terms of a...
How to answer, certainly not, I guess I'm...
I'm not looking for specific information regarding specific personnel, but from a process standpoint, to talk briefly about, you know, working with our department heads in terms of looking at goals for a department and just having those conversations.
Okay. One of the things that we instituted a year ago was start with some basic goal planning and start to get each department focused on what we need to do, what our goals are to accomplish this year, what are we planning to do, how do we measure ourselves against that? And last year was kind of the first year we did that. We're kind of taking, looking for kind of the continuous improvement aspect and looking for how we can continue to grow that. Certainly, we didn't plan on having Storm Sandy, certainly we didn't plan on having Storm Nemo, so that wasn't part of the goals or objectives that any department had in for their challenges for the year. But I think that's also part of the being flexible part in learning to make adjustments through the year and keep your department on track and keep as many of the goals that were planned getting done in spite of that. So we ask a lot from our department heads. We ask that they manage their budgets. We ask that they achieve certain goals. We ask that they keep our town functioning day-to-day. The town has many obligations that are not optional. We have to provide public safety, police and fire support. We have to clear the snow off the roads when that happens. We have to provide roads and maintain our infrastructure. The, those things happen both day and night, in some cases. Those things happen whether it's, regardless of the weather, regardless of some of the weather, as we've seen recently, the intense heat. It's hard to imagine 12 months where we've seen weather-like Storm Sandy, cold-like Storm Nemo, and the intense heat wave that we've had just recently. And much of our public service is done outside, and the town is, at its very essence, a service organization. You stretch beyond that and look at the range of programs that are offered by the public library or by our Parks and Rec Department, and realize the wide range of opportunities and wide range of services that they provide our citizens, how much they impact our quality of life. And realize those are here and those continue to grow and expand within the budgets that they're given, because our department heads are creative about how they use resources and flexible with how they meet those challenges. You go beyond that and realize that we're introducing technology into the tax collector's office, the tax assessor's office, building. We, you know, continue to look for ways to improve our open space and meet the challenges of everything. Again, coming out of Storm Sandy, one of the things we're in the process of doing is figuring out how do we clean out the marsh and all that, and that's one of the ongoing projects we have, as well as looking for improved flood mitigation and additional projects we've handed Mr. Michelangelo in Department of Public Works. So, there's a wide range of challenges that we expect our department heads to do. And if everything goes well, we generally don't say anything. If there's a problem, the phone rings. So they have truly jobs where not everybody's calling up every day to say, hey, thank you, you really did a great job yesterday. Really appreciate, really appreciate that you stayed late, really appreciate that you got extra crews on it, really appreciate that you jumped on this. And a lot of that's done, frankly, when folks don't see it. Because if they solve the problem when it's small, it never gets to be big and nobody gets to see that. And these are the folks we count on to lead our town, to lead our workforce, to make Fairfield both safe and a fun place to live in. So it, I think that we owe them a tremendous amount of thanks in doing that.
And just some follow-up comments. I couldn't agree more, and yet, as I often say to the First Selectmen, I, my general philosophy is there's always something we can learn, and I know that you share that, and that there's always something that we can do better, and that's part of the goal-setting process, I think. Having goals and kind of clear metrics by which we can measure those, so that we can really recognize the work that department heads have done, as well as challenge them in areas of growth that there may be room for improvement in. And I think to that end, that's part of the, you know, as I mentioned before, not being part of the day-to-day operations. I think this is something that, the process is different in many different towns, per different towns charter. It's, again, this is a first time through for us, so I think that, you know, as time goes by, that perhaps even as a board, we can continue to look at how we may improve our conversation about this process. But, you know, that's just something that is important for me, is that the idea that we have some clear expectations and the idea of having metrics is important. So, I'll leave it there for now. Turn back the floor.
Thank you. Mr. Kylie?
Yes, sir. This is a new process for us, and this is certainly a new vote for the Board of Selectmen, the first in my memory, and I'm not sure how far back that goes. And as the First Selectmen mentioned, we are a service organization. We have 60,000 customers, our citizens, our taxpayers, our seniors, our students, and everyone in between. And it's important that we provide them with a high level of service every day, in every possible manner, and that every department head work as efficiently and as intelligently as they possibly can. This list of people, this 14-member, what I call, management team, are the direct reports to the Chief Executive Officer, the First Selectman, Mr. Tetra. And they report to him on a day-to-day basis. They, they work with him every day, he works with them every day, and it's the First Selectmen who has the most knowledge about their skills, their good days, their bad days, their successes, their failures. We know about some of them, many of them. He knows about every one of them, the good, the bad, and everything in between. So, from my perspective, from a process perspective as well, it's, it's important for me to be able to rely on the First Selectmen's interactions with him, the process he has in conjunction with human resources, to evaluate each of his managers, how they set metrics, how they set goals, how they achieve them together to benefit our town, and what processes are put in place when there needs to be improvement. And those are all internal decisions and processes that take place within a structure of an organization or a company, or in this case, the service organization named Fairfield, Connecticut. Good or bad, Mr. Tetra is the CEO, and he's, you know, he's responsible for the actions and for the performance of his management team, and he doesn't need me to tell him that, he knows that, they are his managers. And I would look to you and just rely on you for your expertise and your opinions and accept your recommendations on compensation going forward for the members of your team. And thank you.
Thank you. Any comments from the public? All right, seeing none, back to the board. Are we ready to vote?
Yep.
We took, we had a motion on this, right? Jen, you had a motion in a second?
Yes.
Okay. We ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. All right. Next up, to consider, act upon any tax refunds as recommended by the tax collector, may I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
A second.
Second.
Any discussion? Any comments from the public? All right, back to the board. Are we ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And with that, may I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
A second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Thank you.